Good evening, everyone. I will call this Richfield City Council meeting to order. There being no one here for the open forum that I see, I would ask you all to stand and do the pledge of allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I would entertain a motion seeking approval of the minutes of the Special Joint City Council and Planning Commission Work Session of April 10, 2018, and the regular city council meeting of April 10, 2018.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And it's approved. First item on the agenda is hats off to hometown hits, and I kind of played a ruse with Council Member Troutman, so Council Member Howard, you can go first.
All right. Leading off, a lot of pressure. So I've got a few items coming up this weekend on Saturday, the 28th. Our Richfield Police Department is coordinating with the Drug Enforcement Agency for a drug give-back program, so if you can go through your cabinets and get rid of some drugs safely and securely, you can do this from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and you can drop them off at the Walgreens on 12 West 66th Street. Item number two that I had, we just had a very good work session on our Lindale Avenue project. There's been multiple open houses and Transportation Commission meetings on this. They have a proposal that we just discussed during the work session, and we'll now have a open house to more specifically give folks a chance to take a look at the plans, give your feedback before the city moves forward with final plans with the Lindale Avenue design. And so that open house is going to be on May 1st from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Oak Grove Lutheran Church. And my last item, and for those that live in the Council Member Garcia's ward, you're probably aware of this already, 66th Street construction is beginning, it's begun, and so we got, by virtue of beginning, that puts us more than 50% of the way done with 66th Street, which is an exciting prospect, but it is going to be a summer of construction for the middle section of 66th Street. And so I just want folks to be aware of that and of the resources available to follow along with updates. Look to the city Facebook page and our Sweet Streets Facebook page for up states, and this is a county project. You can also go to Hennepin County's website, and they have an email address as well at 66thStreet@hennepin.mn.us that you can email if you have questions or concerns with 66th Street. And that's my items.
Thanks, sir. Council Member Reagan Gonzalez.
I have two items tonight. So one, this coming Sunday, the 29th, there is a celebration and an event for International Day of the Child and Book Day at the Richfield Community Center from 1 to 3. And what that celebration is for is to do a special film screening for the first time in the community of a great organization and resource that is one of a kind in the nation that started right here in Richfield, and it's a Latino childcare provider network that has been created and is led completely by community members here in Richfield. And essentially what the group is, is it's a network of mostly mothers, grandmothers, aunts that are taking care of children and getting them ready for school. So the majority of our children, some, close to half of our children are taken care of by family, friend, and neighbors and not necessarily going to childcare centers. And there are several reasons that might be preference to just have your child taken care by a family member or a friend, barriers to cost, there's all types of reasons. And so what this network does is it provides free culturally appropriate training and resources every single month to make sure that your kid, your child, is ready for school and is developing to the best of their ability and that your family is well-prepared and trained to do that. So this Sunday from 1 to 3, we will have a celebration. We will be screening the films that talk about what the work of the network is, and we'll have, we're expecting maybe 50 to 60 people there, so it will be a great community event to learn about something that is going on here in Richfield on Sunday. And then the second item, I'm sure somebody else can talk, here in council can speak to this more, but Local Roots Cafe in East Richfield has opened up. The address is 817 East 66th Street. Please go and visit them. I haven't had the pleasure of going yet. I've been out of town, but I know Council Member Troutman for sure has been there, and I've heard great reviews and comments and feedback from our community members, so please go check him out.
Thank you. I echo your comments in regards to welcoming Local Roots. I know the Norgard family quite well. I just want to mention, I had the pleasure and the opportunity to come over to City Hall middle of last week for the national walkout. I was invited by the staff over at the high school, Public Safety Director, Hen Thorne and myself, and I'd, somewhere between three, 350 kids walked over. They were, they were passionate, excited, scared, all the emotions that run through kids that are 15 to 18, 19 years old, given the opportunity the first time to be heard about some of their fears and some of their concerns. Three or four of the student body spoke. Chief Hen Thorne and myself had an opportunity, and what I want to say is that given, given what it was about and everything, the manner in which they conducted themselves, represented both the school and the community, was exemplary. They were passionate, they were loud, but when people had an opportunity to speak, they stopped, they listened, they applauded. You couldn't ask for a better presentation of the younger members of our community than the way they exhibited themselves last week, and I can't tell you how proud I was of them representing both the school and the city. So congratulations to all the kids who are over here. It was an outstanding example of getting involved, being heard, but also being respectful to the people there in the neighborhoods and who were gathered around to listen to them. So I just think it was an outstanding example of our younger citizens that are going to take over the city in the very near future. So, thank you. Council Member Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor Elliott. Well, I just have two brief announcements. One, this was the hipsterist hat that I could find, and we were awarded the City Page's Best Suburb of 2017. Can we give ourselves a hand? This is the United States Postal Service hat. I'm a big fan. If this is a breach of protocol, wearing a mail carrier's hat, please correct me via email. You can email me at mhowardrichfield.mn.gov. But yeah, I think we didn't need the City Pages to tell us that we're a great suburb, but it's nice to see the recognition of just a combination of a lot of things, a lot of great things that are happening here in Richfield. One of those, for the second year in a row, we've been the number-one housing market according to the Twin Cities, or to the Star Tribune here in the Twin Cities. A great restaurant scene and food scene is emerging in Richfield. Richfield Foodies is a real thing, the food culture that's happening in Richfield, from On Delay, that's often on television, and Lynn 65, that's often getting written up. And yes, of course, if anybody's been on social media in Richfield in the last week, Roots, Local Roots Cafe has just been incredibly well-received. And for those that aren't aware, this is a farm-to-table, organic restaurant, cafe, breakfast establishment, and lunches here right across from Veterans Park. Just delicious. I had a croissant that was baked fresh there that morning was wonderful. It was delicious. And for moms and dads with kids, they have, for those that aren't aware, this used to be the old flower, the old Richfield florist's shop. And so where the walk-in cooler used to be is now a kids' play area, and it's open, but it's also kind of set aside, so it's not really loud. So anybody with kids, it's just a wonderful, wonderful place to bring your whole family. So welcome Local Roots and hats off, hipster hats off, to Richfield.
Thank you. Council Member Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. As really kind of the detective, you know, and hats off for Richfield, because, you know, I've got...
You're more the cleanup hitter.
Right.
You're batting four.
But normally, I've got nine listed here, and it was nice to share.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for doing that. So I've got tomorrow at Healthway Emotional Health Services, which is formerly storefront, there will be an informational forum on adolescent depression. And this is a very timely issue. It's an important issue, and it's an opportunity for kids, or for parents, or for neighbors, whomever, to stop by and visit. It's from 4:00 to 5:30 p.m., and it's located at 6425 Niclet, and it is free. So take advantage of this forum. You know, it's a nice service, and we appreciate Healthway Emotional Health Services. And I hope that next time that they sponsor something like this, they let us know with a lot more time, a lot more advance notice. Next, we have the League of Women Voters Annual Dinner, which is coming up on April the 30th at 6:00 p.m. It will be held at the VFW. It's, you know, a few, we've heard about the League of Women Voters. It's a wonderful organization. It's a nonpartisan organization. It's educational. They do the forums for folks that are running for school board and the city council. They also have study sessions where they talk about local issues and state issues. So if you want more information, you can contact MarineScalia at 798-0485. And then next, we have, on May the 3rd, we have the final indoor farmer's market, and that's Thursday, May the 3rd, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Richfield Community Center. And on May the 12th, we have the Lindell Garden condo open house, and this is the folks that want to build at the old Lindell Garden site, and they will be having this at Woodlake Nature Center from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., and that's Saturday, May the 12th. And then we have on May the 17th through the 19th, it's a citywide garage sale, so we want to take advantage of that. Hopefully, you know, by that time, we'll all be ready and eager and just, you know, want to have any excuse to be outdoors. So, and to participate in that, it's a $20 registration fee. Maps will be available to the public. And the deadline to apply, to have, to be part of the city garage sale is April the 30th, so take advantage of that. And finally, on the 29th, which is this coming Sunday, from 3:00 to 4:30, Tapestry will be having a tenant listening session at 70th and Lindell, which is the Oak Grove Church, and that is sponsored by Veep. It's a very important learning session for whomever taught, who never speaks, and whoever, you know, has experiences that need to be, and stories that need to be told. And I believe that's all I've got, Mayor.
That was a lot. Thank you, we appreciate that. Next item...
Mayor Elliott, one more announcement on the subject of food culture. I'm trying to recall the name, but they announced it...
Frango.
Frango. A lot of people have talked to us for a lot of years. I know you were in my council seat before you became mayor, and that was probably the number-one conversation, topic of conversation for our ward, which is what's going to go into the, to the Bruegger's Bagel establishment. And we have, we have a new restaurant, Frango?
F-R-A-N-G-O.
Frango, that's coming to town. It's going to be, it's going to be comfort food, and burgers, and fries, and...
Ice cream.
And ice cream.
And it's my understanding Frango is Portuguese for chicken. That's what we were told last night.
There you go.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. I did forget that. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is consent calendar, and city manager pro tem, I am a little bit tardy in this, but I think based on some of the citizens' comments last night and everything at the Planning Commission, I'm going to ask that we move 3B off the consent calendar because I think I want to present it so that the people out in the audience and everything can understand what it means, taking the comp plan, sending it out for approval and everything. I just think that there was some misunderstandings across the board, given the fact that we've invested 15 months of labor from a lot of our citizens into that. So let's remove that, and then I'll just give a little epistle on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so on to the consent calendar. So now there are four items before the council on the consent agenda. As you know, the consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved, and no further council action on these items is necessary. Item number A, consideration of the approval of setting a public hearing to be held on May 22, 2018, for the consideration of the issuance of new on-sale wine and 3-2 malt liquor licenses for Los Sanchez Taqueria Number 2 LLC, doing business as Los Sanchez Taqueria, located at 2 West 66th Street. And moving on to item C, consideration of the approval of comments and support for the draft Bloomington Local Stormwater Management Plan per the City of Richfield's participation in the Richfield Bloomington Watershed Management Organization. Item D, consideration of the approval of a resolution of support for the Metro D Line Project and the stops within Richfield along Portland Avenue at 66th, 70th, 73rd, and 77th Streets. And that's tonight's consent calendar.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Okay, one more. I'm sorry here. Item E, consideration of the approval for the Richfield Parkway Infrastructure Construction Agreement and the Maintenance Parcel Agreement between the City of Richfield and Chamberlain Apartments LLC. And that does conclude tonight's consent calendar.
Mayor Elliott, may I, at the risk of being a broken record, can I call out one more restaurant that just was in our consent calendar?
Can we pass it first?
Oh, we, yeah, sure.
Then comment?
Thank you.
So I move the consent calendar.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Consent calendar is passed. Council Member Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor Elliott. I just wanted to point out, as we're highlighting different restaurants, the application for the liquor license at Los Sanchez, which used to be Rosa's Cafe, and they've turned over in the last couple of months, and they are an incredibly welcome addition to our community and the food scene. And part of what they're doing there, they want to do karaoke nights and really make that even more community-oriented than it already is. So I just wanted to note that and say that so far, they've been great neighbors, great food, great tortas, and now great karaoke coming to a former Godfather's Pizza near you in the hub.
When's our council karaoke night, guys?
Oh, good question.
Yeah, you don't even want to go there. The item removed from the agenda at my request was 3B. This item for consideration is a consideration of the approval authorizing staff to distribute the draft Richfield 2040 Comprehensive Plan to affected jurisdictions for review. Over the past 15 months, city staff and consultants have been working to gather feedback and update the city's comprehensive plan as required by state statute. The updated draft Richfield 2040 Comprehensive Plan must be submitted to the Metropolitan Council by December 31, 2018. Prior to submission to the Metropolitan Council, the city must distribute the draft plan to affected jurisdictions for review and comment. A mandatory six-month review period must be accommodated. Affected jurisdictions for Richfield include the cities of Bloomington, Edina, and Minneapolis, Hennepin County, School District 280, Watershed Districts Lower Minnesota River, Minnehaha Creek, Nine Mile, and Richfield Bloomington, Minnesota Department of Transportation, Minnesota DNR, and the Metropolitan Airport's Commission. The council is asked to authorize staff to distribute the plan to these jurisdictions in order to begin the required six-month review period. Upon receipt of comments from all jurisdictions or expiration of the six-month review period, a public hearing will be held before the Planning Commission, followed by consideration by the council. The approved plan will then be formally submitted to the Metropolitan Council on or before December 31, 2018. The Metropolitan Council has six months to review and comment on the plan. Just in terms of some historical context, the comprehensive plan update process has included a number of opportunities for residents and business owners to participate. These include Pennfest Information Booths September 2016 and September 2017, Steering Committee meetings, April, June, August 2017, and February 2018, pop-up events, Metro Transit Bus Riding, May 2017, Loaves and Fishes, May 2017, DMV, May 2017, and Farmer's Market, July 2017, a survey distribution by Steering Committee members primarily in April and May of 2017, open houses in May 2017, August 2017, March 2018, a Wikimap survey in April of 2017, and an online survey in March of 2017. I wanted to go through this, just, and then I'm going to have the Community Development Director, Mr. Stark, kind of detail what the comp plan and how it interacts with a lot of the other planning that goes on in the city. But I wanted to bring this up because I was at the Planning Commission last night, and there was some consternation, maybe occasional anger, or misunderstanding as to how a developer could advertise a mixed use that wasn't in place yet, but it wasn't going to be in the new comp plan, and a lot of different things that kind of gave the sense that there was either a miscommunication or a lack of communication of what we were doing, what the comp plan was. And I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but to sum, a sense of somehow it had been put together and backdoored them without there ever being communications or made aware of it. It is something that is not infrequently alleged, and part of it is that we're limited in our resource in being able to communicate, so we send it out in the traditional ways and hope that people that are interested will come to one of these events that I just, we just talked about that were through 2016, 17, and 18. And if they don't do that, other communications are word of mouth. But the sense that there's a lack of communication from the city staff, elected officials to the community is an ongoing problem that I can't even tell you how many times we've talked about it and tried to address it and tried to solve the problem. I don't know that it's ever going to be solved, but all I can say is that the lack of communications is not for lack of trying. There are repeated attempts to try to get the message out and to let you know that there's going to be a work session, there's going to be a meeting, there's going to be an open house, and if you're interested or concerned of what's going to come out of it, please come or communicate. You can always call one of us up here on the dais, you can call somebody on the city staff. They'd be more than happy to explain what's going on. So I understand that we're all busy, we all have a lot of other events competing for our time and our attention, but I would like to be able to say that we're making inroads in getting the communication out and being transparent to the citizens so that people don't feel that something was snuck past them when they weren't looking, or because we didn't make them aware of it. Because that is very detrimental to the relationship and the trust that we need to have from the constituents, and they need to have in us in trying to move the city forward. So. Mr. Stark, you're on.
Thank you, Chair, or Mayor Elliott, and council members. You know, in the, you ran through the events that took place as part of the comprehensive plan, and there were 13 public events and three surveys, and I'm really proud to have been a small part of the comprehensive plan process because through those 13 events and the three surveys, I would say conservatively, there were hundreds of Richfield residents involved in the comprehensive plan. And, you know, words mean something, so kind of like I never like to say affordable housing without throwing the word quality in front of it. It's quality affordable housing that we're aiming for. With comprehensive plan, I always like to make sure I lead it with the community-led comprehensive plan. This was a community-driven process. When we went to all of these events, we went without baggage, we went without preconceived notions. There was a 15-member committee, steering committee, that really, again, volunteers that live in the community, that gave of their time to participate in this. That group and the residents that were at all these events were the authors of the comprehensive plan. It wasn't staff, and really, it wasn't you folks. You folks will be given the opportunity at some point in time to say whether you agree with it or not, but it was authored at the community level. And a comprehensive plan is really, it's visionary in nature. It's, what are our aspirations for our community? Then later on, there are all kinds of ordinances and regulations and rules that we put into place that implement that vision. Some of those, for example, are the zoning ordinance. As was mentioned, you know, there was a project that went before the Planning Commission last night, and the Planning Commission, in a very wise move, in my opinion, recognized that the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance are different things that are accomplishing different purposes, and they had no qualms with the comprehensive plan as it's been proposed. They, after deliberating on questions about the comprehensive plan as it applied to a specific site, they felt comfortable with this 15-month process that brought them to that point. When it comes down to the tax, the nitty-gritty details, you know, the details of a particular development, you know, they may put on their, on the brakes and say, wait, wait, we need some more information, and that's the appropriate thing to do. But again, this comprehensive plan that we're talking about has been a community-led vision, and I don't want to stand in the way of pushing forward what 15 months' worth of community members have told us.
Thank you. With that being said, at this time, I would move to authorize staff to distribute the draft of Richfield 2040 Comprehensive Plan to affected jurisdictions for review and comment.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just one quick comment, that we had a work session to talk about some of the specifics, and excellent presentation that, kind of high-level, what is our comprehensive plan and the process, and I know that that is online for folks to view, and so just to, I was looking for it myself. I think it could maybe be featured a little more prominently and maybe posted. I know we have done posts on Facebook, but I think it is a really great product of work over those 15 months, and let's get it up on the website, maybe on our front page somewhere for folks to then go to the website, take a look at it, review it. If you have questions, you can talk to us about it as we move forward, but it's, I'm also very proud of the work that's done, the community has done, on the comprehensive plan that we're moving forward with.
Thank you. Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Comments?
Yeah, one comment. If I could, I just wanted to, because we've gotten several emails, and I haven't had a chance to go through the Planning Commission, but I understand there are a number of comments there, and one of the comments that a citizen sent to me, I think it might be helped, because if one citizen said it, I'm sure there are a number of people that are concerned about it, and they said that the change in the comp plan for looking at mixed-use residential down the 66th corridor in that area, that that wasn't suggested until a couple weeks ago on the last version, and that didn't seem right to me, that didn't comport with my memory, but I just wondered, just for the sake of the community, if you wanted to comment on that, just so we have it on the, that's been in the works for some time, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor and Council Member Troutman, yeah, I can't tell you the exact date that that came in.
Sure, and I'm putting you on the spot. I talked to you about this before, I just, but just, that didn't seem right to me, so...
At that geographic location, the mixed use, my guess is that's been there for at least a year.
Okay.
At least 10 months, at the very least. The proposal that we have before us for that... The proposal that we have before us for that site was submitted a couple of months ago, actually, a few weeks ago, formally. It's a site that developers in the past have looked at. The current developer that's proposing something has come to talk about in very conceptual ways. And, you know, I can't say with certainty that the proposal by a developer on that site didn't have some effect on the thinking of the community members that were looking at the comprehensive plan. But if so, there was nothing, there was nothing connected between the developer and the citizens that worked on the plan.
No, I really appreciate that. And I also appreciate just the folks that, like a couple of people have pointed out, our volunteers, they're citizens that lead that, that nobody pays them anything. This is a labor of love for them. And so appreciate their work and appreciate everybody that came out last night, too.
And I think just one comment I'd like to make, and this is an add-on to what's already been talked about. But what we're authorizing tonight is for staff to send it out to the affected jurisdictions for a six-month review. And then it'll come back before the Planning Commission on an open meeting, and it'll come to us. If you have concerns, questions, or anything, I'm not saying you can change it, but if you want to talk about it, call anybody, any of your representatives, call staff. It's going to be out there for six months, so it's not going to go into effect. But it's never too late to discuss and get a full understanding of what's happening, whether it's on the end of your block or the other side of town. So I want to give you the opportunity. If you have questions, please contact your elected officials, staff, or somebody that can kind of help walk you through it. Because I think information is valuable, and the more you have and the more you understand the comp plan and how that affects the city, the better off and we're going to understand what's coming in the next three to five years. There's going to be a lot of development going on. And I think you need to be knowledgeable and informed about what's going where and why it's going there and how the city works. So... Did we vote? Let me call the vote. I think it's been moved and seconded.
Has it been, has it been seconded?
Yeah.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the appointment of an adult member to the Arts Commission with a term expiring January 31st, 2019. At the Arts Commission meeting in March, a commissioner notified the staff liaison that they were moving out of Richfield and would be resigning from the commission. On March 7th, the commissioners submitted their formal resignation effective April 6th. During the December 2017, January 2018 recruitment period for the advisory commissions, six residents submitted applications and listed a preference for the Arts Commission, but were not selected for appointment to a commission. Staff emailed these applicants to see if they were all still interested in serving on the Arts Commission and heard back from four applicants. The City Council work session was held on April 24th, 2018 to review the applications and discuss an applicant to be appointed. The City Council and myself met before coming over here this evening and went through the four applicants. And it's no easier the second time around than it was the first time. We've had so many quality applicants for a limited number of positions. And once again, we've got four applicants for an appointment to the Arts Commission, and we can only appoint one. So I'm happy to announce that Chelsea Knopf has been elected to the Arts Commission. And I want to thank the other three applicants that resubmitted their names. And I certainly hope that the next go-around, we can find positions on other commissions for you. So with that being said, at this time, I would move for the consideration of Chelsea Knopf to an appointment as an adult member of the Arts Commission with a term expiring January 31st, 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I would suggest, Ms. Knopf, that the chair of the Arts Commission will probably be in contact with you, welcome you to the commission, and let you know when the next meeting is. And hopefully, you have a long and enjoyable term with the commission. Next item is the City Manager's report.
Mayor, I do not have a report for the council this evening.
You sound just like the city manager.
I asked him if he had anything that he wanted to share, but he felt that he's kept you up to speed pretty well, so.
Okay, that's the truth, so rest comfortable with that. Claims and payroll?
Mr. Mayor, I will move claims and payroll.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item passes. No one's here for the open forum. With that being said, no further business. I adjourn this council meeting.